I would like to call the regular meetings of the Housing Successor, Successor Agency, and City Council to order. City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Rounds.
Here.
Councilmember Zamora.
Here.
Mayor Protim Sarno.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
Thank you.
The City of Santa Fe Springs will allow for any invocation to be offered at its city council meetings, and it's open to any faith or religion on a voluntary basis. Invocational speakers shall be limited to one minute. Please contact the city clerk's office if you would like to offer any invocation. I would like to call upon Ms. Jarvis to lead us in today's invocation. Please stand.
My faith and my heart failth, but God is the strength of my heart and my portion forever. Matthew 5:4. Having faith in difficult times can allow you to find peace in God's presence. Learning to give up your struggles and problems to God can lift a heavy burden off yourself. God's given us the gift of faith so we may be using it to not be in constant worry when we're surrounded by uncertainties. This past week has brought us uncertainty in the lives of schoolchildren and teachers and principals across our nation once again. As we come together as a community to pray for our schools, let's recognize those six people who went to school in Nashville expecting a normal day until evil arrived on that campus. Evelyn Dykhouse, age nine. William Kinney, age nine. Haley Scruggs, age nine. Mike Hill, age 61. Cynthia Peak, age 61. And the school principal, Catherine Kuntz, age 60. Let's pray for our community and our nation. Please pray with me. Lord, we come to you in times of chaos. You bring order to what seems to be out of order. We know you're in control, and we seek your guidance and wisdom. Please cover our community and our nation with your hand of protection, and bless the members of this council as they lead our wonderful city. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Cindy. I would like to call upon Lee Squire to do our pledge of allegiance up. Lee, could you do us the honors, please?
Raise your hand over your heart. Those who are military, you're allowed to salute the flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people which stands a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Even we had Lee do the pledge allegiance. Can I have youth leadership, please come up, introduce yourselves? Mic's right behind you.
Hi, my name is Valerie Bohorkes. I am 16 years old, and I am part of the Youth Leadership Committee.
Hi, I'm Victoria Masonave. I'm 17, and I'm a part of the Teens Program Volunteer Service.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Dos. I am 14, and I am part of the YLC.
Hi, everyone. I'm Zulimika Gomboa. I'm 17. I'm also part of the YLC.
Thank you so much, girls. Introduction to our Chamber of Commerce. I do see CEO Kathy Fink here. Thank you for being here. Also, we have on Zoom, we have CEO of LaFell Manufacturing Company, Ramon Vinco. And a little bit about LaFell Manufacturing Company. It fabricates the most critical precision tubular products in support of the commercial airplane, defense, and aerospace industries. From the very beginning, as a small tool and die shop established in 1930 by C.K. LaFell, an engineer and inventor, the company has evolved into the global leader in the design of the fabrication of precision tubular products. LaFell Manufacturing Company's prior experience plays an important role in how we will service your tubular needs for today and tomorrow. Experience allows us to combine our most successful processes in conjunction with new and innovative methods, creating a highly technical yet flexible approach to customers' needs. LaFell's inflammation of total quality management provides a multitude of capabilities to ensure complete customer satisfaction. Thank you both for being here from the chamber. Thank you. Item number five. If anyone is interested in making a public comment on agenda items, please fill out a public comment card located in the back of the council chamber and hand it to the city clerk. For those joining us via Zoom, if you're interested in speaking on the agenda items, please raise your hand when the item is called. The city clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application or submitted a card before the item is voted upon. Any public comment now related to the agenda item will be heard under item number 11. Item number six, Housing Successor Agenda. We have one consent item. Is there a motion for the approval of item number six?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Rodriguez, second by Rounds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Item number seven, Successor Agency Agenda. We have one consent item. Is there a motion for approval, number seven? Is there a second? Motion by Sarno, approved by Zamora. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Item number eight, City Council Agenda. We have three consent items, A through C. Is there a motion for the approval of City Council Consent Agenda?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion by Rounds, second by Rodriguez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Old business, item number nine, Traffic Study, Orin Day Road and Whiteland Street. I would like to call upon interim Director of Public Works, Yvette Kirian.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. This is an item that you sent us back to work to get some pricing on for you regarding the Orin Day and Whiteland Street signalization, which turned into a stop sign exercise. I wanted to show a few graphics tonight after we first talked about the consideration of installing stop signs with flashing red LEDs and advanced flashing yellow beacons, as well as the need to add the project to the capital improvement program because it's not currently contained within it, as well as to appropriate the funds that we need to do the work. So I'll go ahead and go to this graphic first. The recommendation that came through the CIP Subcommittee last week, and that's in front of you today, includes Orin Day, boundaried by Telegraph and Pioneer. Pioneer is up on the top side of the screen, and Telegraph Road is towards the left-hand bottom side of the screen. I don't know if I have a pointer. With this item, you can see that there are six stop signs that would be LED illuminated that are actually at the intersection itself at Whiteland. And then there are two flashing yellow beacons that provide advanced warning to motorists as they come through the area. In order for us to install this, we would have to have funds appropriated so that we can order the materials, which we expect to take eight to 10 weeks to order the materials, and then we could work with our maintenance crews to go out and install the signs, as well as to refresh the paint that surrounds the striping of that area, to refresh the stop bars that are in front of the intersection, for example. On the very next slide, you'll see that we've superimposed what they would look like at the intersection, both at the immediate intersection. You can see on the left-hand upper photograph, it shows the stop signs, both in that center median protected area, as well as on the right-hand traditional side where a stop sign would be. And right above it has that LED and illuminated flashing light. And then on the photograph that's on the right lower side, this would be as you're driving up to the intersection, both to the north as well as to the south, both ways approaching the intersection, you would see the advanced warning stop signs with the flashing yellow beacons. So again, in order to accommodate this, we have a recommendation that you first agree with our staff approach that did go through the CIP Study Committee, that you allow us to include this into the capital improvement plan, and that you appropriate approximately $150,000 from the utility users' tax to the capital improvement fund in order for us to order the materials and install these signs. Thank you so much. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or direction for staff?
I have one question. Yvette, can you address the yellow blinking crosswalk?
Sure.
Because, yeah, please address.
Sure. So if we were to put in, if we were to allow that flashing crosswalk to continue, it would break up the flow of how you normally stop at stop signs per the code. So if you have a four-way stop sign and you stop, then each person to your right is permitted to go as you arrive at the stop sign from vehicle code. And there is not a "ped" button that would make everybody stop at all the time to allow for that flashing crosswalk to protect someone. If you had a stoplight there, you could put it all on red and have a flashing pedestrian crosswalk. But with this configuration of having stop signs in all four corners, we can't have a flash, we can't allocate a phase essentially to pedestrians. They're always permitted to cross in these types of situations. So the flashing crosswalk would not be any longer there.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the clarification, just so people know that that's going to happen if it is approved. Now, because there's going to be a four-way stop, are there going to be crosswalks? Additional crosswalks? Are there going to be four crosswalks?
Um, I don't have, yeah. One side. So we have one ramp. I actually, I don't have an answer for you on that right now, so I can get back to the group on whether we would have any striping to do so. I have not reviewed the actual corners to look at the ADA ramps or anything else, so I don't want to commit to something that I haven't analyzed for new crosswalk refreshments. So I.
I didn't know maybe by code that they may be required since there's going to be a four-way stop.
I don't believe it's a requirement.
Okay.
Any other council have questions, comments?
Long-term overdue.
Yes. So for the direction for the staff, I think we are all in agreeance to move forward with this. Are we all in agreeance with it?
Yes.
Yes.
Definitely.
Yes.
All.
Perfect. We need a brief five-minute recess real quick.
Make sure.
Okay, we are back now.
Madam Mayor, in an abundance of caution because of Councilmember Zamora's proximity to this location, he is going to recuse himself from this item, so he will step away from the dais and return after this item is concluded.
Perfect. So moving forward on this, are we giving the direction for staff to move forward the project?
I would like to make a motion. That's what it requires, right? Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second the motion.
Anything else from us? That's it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. But it's going to be, excuse me, it's going to be recommended to see if we do need to do the four, the crosswalks, correct?
Well, I think that was just a question. I think that could probably be added afterwards.
Okay.
That doesn't need direction, I don't think, from the council.
Okay.
I don't believe so.
So you have.
The recommendation that's listed is fine?
Correct.
And we can follow up regarding the crosswalks. It's just paint.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay. Now we're moving on to presentations. Item number 10, Proclaiming the month of April 2023 as DMV Donate Life Month in Santa Fe Springs.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I would like to call upon the city clerk to read the proclamation, but at the same time, I would like to welcome Ruth Covington up to the podium as well. City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. Whereas donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others. Whereas any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor regardless of age or medical conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that in recognition of National Donate Life Month, the month of April 2023 is hereby proclaimed DMV Donate Life Month.
Thank you so much, Janet.
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, thank you for this opportunity to discuss Donate Life Month. My name is Ruth Covington, and some of you may remember my husband, Dale Covington. He was a recreation supervisor who passed away from a heart attack in 2006. Dale was a beloved member of our community, and upon his passing, I honored his wishes to be a donor. For 16 years, I've been talking about all of the people. Dale's tissues have helped lead more productive lives. Last year, I needed a bone graft to repair my shattered shoulder, and now I understand what those words mean. Today, I'm able to close my car door, grab items from the top of my cabinets, and push my shopping cart at the grocery store. I'm very proud of my husband's generous gift, and I'm here tonight to encourage everyone to consider joining the millions of Californians who, like my husband, check the yes box at the DMV or online at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the community regarding the importance of organ, eye, and tissue and transplantation.
Ruth, and again, thank you for always keeping Dale's memory alive, too. Thank you.
Thank you for remembering him. It's been a while.
We can never forget Dale. So come on in. Onto the next item, proclaiming the week of April 16 through the 22nd, 2023 as National Volunteer Week in Santa Fe Springs. I would like to call on Library Service Managers, Deborah Ralla, please.
King, Mayor and Council, National Volunteer Week is an opportunity to recognize the impact of volunteer service and the power of volunteers to build stronger communities. In Santa Fe Springs, volunteers are involved with diverse events and programs, such as the Santa float, adult and youth sports, the Holiday Basket Program, and children's literacy. Volunteers also serve on advisory boards and committees. To celebrate our volunteers who've served in 2022, the city is hosting its sixth Volunteer Recognition Dinner on Wednesday, April 19. Evening will be dedicated to them for their service in helping the city accomplish many of its program goals. I'd like to invite some of our volunteers to help accept the proclamation for National Volunteer Week in the city. First, there's Valerie Bohorkes with the Youth Leadership Committee, Zulina Gomboa with the Youth Leadership Committee, Victoria Masonave, who is a teen programs volunteer, Vanessa Dos with the Youth Leadership Committee, and Bonnie Fox, who's a volunteer at the GVNC.
Janet, please, right in the middle.
Whereas the City of Santa Fe Springs Volunteer Program is a vital function in our community, and whereas municipalities, volunteers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Volunteer Week, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Santa Fe Springs does hereby proclaim April 16, 2022, 2023 as National Volunteer Week. Thank you.
You know what? Could every volunteer that's in the audience, please come up. I think 99% of everyone here is volunteer, so please come up. That says something about our city. Everybody has a volunteer that's come up.
Come on up.
Come on. Everybody has a volunteer here. Yeah, the husbands have to come up, too, because you guys are volunteers, too.
Turn on volunteers. They do it out. They have to.
But they're volunteering still, though. Thomas, you have to, too. Come on up. Item number 11, Public Comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use a raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on non-agenda items only. The city clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. For those of you that are here to make a public comment in person, you'll have the opportunity once the city clerk announces your name. You have three minutes to speak. City Clerk, do you have any members of the public that wish to speak today?
Madam Mayor, today we have two speakers. First, we have Bruce Crowe.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff and residents. Thank you for this opportunity to come up here again. I'm just here as an update on the Central Basin Municipal Water District. You may not be aware, but the plea hearing of Mr. Alex Rojas, the general manager, has been postponed till April 27. So they're scrambling like crazy, and they're getting a postponement, but I think things are definitely heating up, and more information is coming in as far as the evidence and the actions that some of the people on the Central Basin Board, elected and unelected, and the activities that have been participated in over the past few years are going to be under scrutiny and being revealed shortly. And I want to say also that we're going to also be looking into some people that you may or may not be aware of, that have done some things that are unscrupulous at the best. But I want to say they're going to include, but not limited to, our former mayor and now Assembly Member, Blanca Pacheco, our current mayor, Claudia Fermetta, our previous assistant city manager, John Scoey, and also your previous Public Works Director, who is no longer here, in the Omlow Law Firm. And they're going to be subject to scrutiny as to how they treated certain whistleblowers, and how they're treating them now, today, even in the last meeting. Obviously, things are really heating up now. So I think April 27 is going to be a go for this trial, and that's what it looks like to me. I'm no expert in this, but you get that feeling. And I want to do one more thing. Just a reminder, the Parents' Bill of Rights, when we have the Nashville shooting and the breaking down, or the attempt to break down of the family and the parents' rights to have say in what their kids are taught, or what medical procedures they are allowed to have, that the parents should be in charge of these things and not school officials or government officials in certain areas. And I just want to say the Parents' Bill of Rights was passed in Congress two weeks ago, and unfortunately, our representative, Robert Garcia, and your representative, Linda Sanchez, voted no. They opposed the parents being in control of their children's lives. That's unfortunate. Thank you.
Next, we have Lee Squire.
Lee Squire, Vietnam Veterans of Downey, Mayor and City Council, and we, the people of the City of Santa Fe Springs. First of all, I would like to say thank you on behalf of the VA Clinic. Their head nurse wants to personally thank the two proclamations. One who honored all the disabled veterans would be Mayor Rodriguez, and the ones who honored the Vietnam veterans of this nation, and that would be Mayor Martin. She sends out her heartfelt thanks for those two proclamations. I'm going to do a recon, and I think you may have said history as the only city ever given them a proclamation. So I will report back to this city council. You gave them honor. You gave us honor. I want to present to the city council pictures of a purple heart and the wreath at the mobile wall that was at Hawaiian Gardens, March 23 to the 26. I ask Mayor to read the purple heart at the conclusion of my comments. POW MIA flags. We veterans are honored with the raising of that flag. I cannot thank you enough. That honored all the veterans that are served by this community, even via the VA Clinic. Most associate this flag with those who served during the Vietnam War. It was Vietnam veterans that made public focus of POW and the MIAs. This flag unites all generations tied to Vietnam veterans, World War II and Korean War, who were the parents, aunts, and uncles of the sons and daughters, and the nieces and nephews, and others who served during the Vietnam War. This flag also honors those who served after Vietnam to this present day. Again, the VA Clinic in Santa Fe Springs unites the services to your veterans. World War II to the present, the VA Clinic serves the Army, the Marines, Navy, Air Force, and Coast Guard. We thank all the staff of the VA Clinic in serving the people of Santa Fe Springs and all these running cities, including Downey. God bless America. God bless the nation of Israel. God bless my military and my veterans, and God bless local policing across America and their families. Thank you very much for raising that POW flag. Thank you again.
Madam Mayor, that concludes our speakers.
You guys didn't see, so Lee brought us over the wall that's in Hawaiian Gardens with the purple heart, and underneath it says, after the wall was built, visitors began unexpectedly leaving items of remembrance. A purple heart, a US military decoration awarded to those wounded or killed in combat, thought to be the first item left at the wall during the construction of the memorial. More than 400,000 items have been left since 1982. Thanks, Lee, for this. Thank you. Is there anyone else wanting to speak during public comments? Go ahead. No, go ahead. It's open.
Frances Carballo, I apologize. I came in a little late. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Sister Cities Committee. As you know, this Saturday is Extravaganza, so we're sponsoring the Pancake Breakfast, which starts at 8:00 a.m. I do have tickets if anybody has not purchased theirs yet. We didn't raise a price, and it's still $5. I'm very happy with the community. Our committee has dwindled quite a bit. Our committee has dwindled quite a bit, and we got a lot of people that stepped up. As our member Lori Rios knows, we have our planning commissioners, Gabriel Jimenez, who signed up, Planning Commissioner Joe Zamora, who signed up, Baba Yella says he might be there. We got Kerry Cobos, Mr. Ann. I mean, everybody is just coming in, and it is a great event. We know we'll see all of you there. For the residents, please come out. This is our kickoff drive. Whatever we make, we're hoping now to establish an agreement with our German counterparts to restart our exchange for 2025. So right now, as you know, airfares are pretty high and things are a little iffy out there in Europe, but we're hoping to do that and get that going. So thank you very much, and we're always looking for volunteers.
Thank you. No other public comments? I'll now close public comments and move on to the next item. City Managers' Report and Executive Team Reports. Tom?
Yes. Hi. Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Good evening, staff and members of the community. I just had two short reports this evening. The first one is to let everyone know that the city recently conducted Brown Act training. The training is supported by our City Council, and it seeks to ensure that our Commissions and Advisory Committees understand that they must hear input from the general public before they make any decisions. Our team held a few training sessions for our community members that serve as Commissioners and Advisory Committee members, so they could hear details and ask questions about the Brown Act. I attended one of the sessions, and the important information was outlined in a helpful and informative manner. Thanks to our city attorney Ivy Si and City Clerk Janet Martinez for leading the sessions. Well done. The second update is I wanted to mention that the City Council has high expectations related to helping Santa Fe Springs fight for grant opportunities to help our community. Because of this, we are always looking for opportunities to apply and compete for local funding. Staff just submitted a grant application to Congresswoman Linda Sanchez's office last Thursday. Our team put together an outstanding application packet seeking $2.6 million for a program we call the Slauson Avenue Street Improvement Project. The application process required a lot of concise details, pictures, maps, and support letters in a total document of about ten pages. We feel confident that the quality application was submitted, and hopefully, when we hear good news about the grant in about six to eight months. If successful, we will learn that it helped us fund improvements to a section of Slauson Avenue located in Santa Fe Springs. Just a real quick thank you to the Garcia team and Wong team of Mary Bell Garcia, Robert Garcia, and Jack Wong and Jimmy Wong. That internal team worked together to pull together that application into some very short deadlines. So congratulations to them, and I'm glad it's submitted. All right, now we'll hear a update from our Director of Community Services, Mariela Balderas.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, audience. Have a couple of reports to share with you this evening. Wanted to start off with our Chalk It Out event. Please put up the slide. So we had over eighty children that came out on Saturday, March 25, and had a chalkastic time at the Chalk It Out event. The event was held from 9:00 to 12:00 noon at Town Center Plaza. In addition to the chalk art, the participants enjoyed free books that were provided by our awesome library. We had arts and crafts, face painting, and corn dogs were provided by the Hot Dog on a Stick. The parents also enjoyed delicious coffee, compliments of our local Starbucks, and thank you, Daniel O'Hara, for your generous donation. We'd also like to thank our chalk art judges, who are members of the Parks and Recreation Committee, Kerry Cobos, Nancy Kruger, John Mora, and Heritage Arts Advisory Committee Member and Planning Commissioner Frances Cabraha. I want to thank and commend our Parks and Rec staff for the amazing job that they did planning and hosting this awesome event. Lastly, also, we want to thank our Mayor Martin, Council Members Rodriguez, Rounds, and Zamora for their attendance at the event. There were so many creative art pieces that our kids are just so talented in our community. So the first prize winners will also be featured artists at the Art Fest on April 28. Here's a short video that recaps the event.
What'd you make today?
I just made a little town. I was using the chalk.
Why did you make it?
Because I was trying to win first place.
So this was a kind of a nod to both He-Man and dinosaurs, because as a kid, I was really obsessed with dinosaurs. And I used to watch the reruns of He-Man when I used to visit my grandma on the weekends.
I think it's just like a good way to like see other forms of art. Like, you have your own art, but you really get inspired by looking at other people's work, and you can add some questions, and it's just like a good place to get inspired by everything.
And most importantly, you guys, their division here for the community and the resources as far as community development's really good. They got a lot of family events. You guys, the city's really strong in that area.
Thank you, Santa Fe Springs.
Next, so last Saturday on April 1st, the staff hosted a cleanup event at the community garden. We had about fifteen volunteers and staff that spent a few hours pulling weeds and beautifying the garden. We'd like to thank the Public Services who donated a full container of mulch. We'd also like to thank Martin Mayor, Mayor Martin, Council Member Rodriguez, and all the volunteers for their hard work on Saturday. Our next cleanup will be in October. Next, I know Frances Cabraha mentioned it, but our Easter egg extravaganza is going to be held this Saturday, April 8 at Heritage Park. So the day's going to begin at 8:00 in the morning with the Sister City booth serving a delicious pancake breakfast. Breakfast is $5 per person. Then the real fun begins as we kick off our egg hunt at 10:00 in the morning for all age categories, zero to two, three to four, five to six years, seven to eight, nine to ten years, and 11 to 12. Additionally, we're going to have a face painter on site, pictures with a bunny at $2 per picture, arts and crafts, bounce houses, and the traditional Leggeretta family cakewalk. So we look forward to seeing everyone on Saturday. Next, so the annual spring fling dance for the older adults will take place on Friday, April 21st, from 9:00 to noon. Tickets are $10, and it includes lunch. And the participants can register by visiting the Gustalaspa Neighborhood Center. Next item, so the Food and Film Event returns on Saturday, April 15th, at 6:00 p.m. in the community room at the library. We're going to show the movie Easter Sunday. It's a comedy starring Joel Coy, and we will be serving authentic Filipino food. Admission is $10, and registration is required, as seats are limited. And then, last one we have is on Saturday, May 13th. The library will host its first Santa Fe Springs Comics Fest. At this all-day event, family-friendly event, we're going to host twenty-four small independent publishers and comic creators who will be showcasing their titles. We will also have panel discussions on topics like enemy, signs, and how to publish your own comics. We will also have a cosplay costume contest for adults and children. This event is free, and registration, yeah, is not required. So more information will be available as we get closer to the event. And then lastly, I just want to wish our City Council, their families, and the audience a very happy Thanksgiving holiday on Sunday, and to make sure you eat your veggies. Giving? I'm Easter. Easter holiday, sorry. But eat your veggies.
Great, thank you. Representing our Finance Administration Department is Lana Ditch, our Finance Manager.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, Madam Mayors and Council Members. I have two items. Very happy to report that on March 22nd and 24th, our Human Resource Office hosts this Kaiser and Imperial professional service for onsite physical and fingerprinting for seasonal hiring of community service program leaders. This is an effort to simplify the preplacement process for candidates, as the majority of the candidates are local students. Twenty-six of fifty-three candidates are Santa Fe Spring residents. Also on Thursday, March 23rd, Human Resource, together with City Managers' Office and Community Services, attend the Santa Fe High School Career Fair. Staff pass out goodie bags and promoted various cities' part-time positions and volunteer opportunities. Staff who attended the Santa Fe High School Career Fairs are Santa Fe alumni and was excited to visit Santa Fe to encourage students to volunteer, work for the city, and for their educations by attending college. That ended my report. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Representing our Fire Department is our Fire Chief, Chad Van Nederen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I have a few items for you this evening. If I get the first slide, please. I'm happy to report that our OES that was deployed out to Tulare County returned last week. Luckily, the floods were not as bad as they expected, so they did not see as large of an incident as they were expecting. However, our crews were out there doing some very good work, helping local businesses and hospitals with some local flooding that they had in that area. We're happy that everybody returned safely from that, and I'd like to welcome that crew back. If I can get the next slide, please. Also returning last week was our Urban Search and Rescue Team that was up in Mammoth. Unfortunately, well, fortunately, before they returned, they saw a lot of action up there in Mammoth. If I get the next slide, please. As you guys may have seen on the news, there was an explosion that injured some people up in Mammoth. Our crews were some of the first on scene, and we're the ones that performed the extrication. If I can get the next slide, please. This is the house after they had extricated the patient. The house, this is a third story of a three-story condo. The patient was on the first floor, entangled in that debris, and our crews were able in about forty-five minutes to get down to that patient, extricate him, safely transfer them over to Bishop Fire, who then flew the lady, or the patient, sorry, the patient out to Reno for further treatment. If I can get the next slide, please. Just to give you a little little idea of what we have for employees here in the city of their character. The crews were given a day off after working for seven straight days on building shoring and that extrication. Rather than just sitting around and enjoying that day off, they actually went out and helped a couple of local citizens unbury their propane tanks so they can get them filled for heating and cooking. So the guys tell me they dug down about twenty, twenty-five feet. That doesn't look like twenty-five feet to me, but that's what they're claiming, that they were only about halfway when they got to this point. So, yeah, yeah, yeah. So anyway, they all returned safely, and I'd like to welcome them back as well. If I can get the next slide, please. So the month of March was a good month for the Fire Department and the City of Santa Fe Springs. We were awarded two grants. The first grant is for $46,285. This competitive grant will help replace ten sets of turnouts. I'm sorry, fifteen sets of turnouts. These turnouts need to be replaced every fifteen years. I'm sorry, ten years. I'm getting the numbers messed up. They need to be replaced every ten years. So about every three years, three and a half years or so, we end up having to replace about fifteen sets of turnouts for our guys. These will replace those fifteen sets for this upcoming year, so you'll see that coming back to you again. If I can get the next slide, please. And finally, in March, we also received a grant from the State Homeland Security Program. This grant's for $389,575, and this will help replace some equipment on our urban search and rescue vehicle that was up in Mammoth, as well as our hazmat type-one funded through the state. This will also help with the training and offset the costs of running those programs. So with that, that ends my report. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Representing our Department of Police Services is our Director of Police Services, Dino Torres.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, Mayor and Council. First slide is a notable update by the Whittier Police Department serving Santa Fe Springs. That was in the council briefs from the city manager, March 23rd. We had our set, our special enforcement team, that works with other jurisdictions and other agencies. In this case, they worked with the DA and the DEA to capture three individuals who were trying to make a deal in the target parking lot. In this case, they got fifty pounds of methamphetamine and recovered $4,000 in cash. So those are the things that people don't see, but special thanks to the special enforcement team of the Whittier Police Department. Next slide, please. We had our situational awareness active shooter seminar, and that was on March 30th. We had two sessions. I had mentioned at the last meeting that this was going to happen. Again, it's the run, hide, fight in case there's an active shooter. I wanted to say a special thank you to Sergeant Paul Segura. He's the traffic sergeant up in Whittier, and he does these types of presentations. Secondly, we had an impromptu, but it was a good presentation by Battalion Chief Mike Glaze. So Paul Segura gave what the police department would do when they go into a active shooter situation, and then Mike Glaze went up, and he talked about the fire perspective, what they do in an active shooter situation. So I appreciate that. We'll be doing some more joint training this way, and thank you very much. Thanks.
Right. Representing our Department of Planning is our Assistant Director of Planning, Juan Nguyen.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I have one quick item to report tonight. On March 24, 2023, our Assistant Planner Claudia Jimenez and I attended a Career and Job Resource Fair at the Pioneer High School. It was held during the student's lunch hour. It was a great opportunity to meet the freshmen to senior students, and we were able to educate them on the exciting career in planning and the role that planners do to shape our communities. I think we may have convinced a few students to look into the career, a planning career. I'm a little bit biased, but I think, you know, why wouldn't you look to be a planner? That's all I have to report tonight. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And finally, from the Department of Public Works is our Interim Director of Public Works, Yvette Corin.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I have a few slides to share tonight. First, we have lots of CIP projects going on. In addition to the ten projects that were recently completed in our first year of the approved CIP, we have seven projects that have active construction activity going on or recently underway. It includes this list here. The first item on the list and the last item on the list are ongoing construction projects. One is in-house with the residential LED streetlights, where city forces continue to remove the street lighting and install new LEDs. The last one on the list is our regional big bridge project with the Rosecrans Markort Grade Separation that's led by Metro that's ongoing. Also, there's five projects there, bookended in the center between two and six. A couple of park projects, which are very exciting to report. Demolition has started on Lakeview Park, and Los Nietos Park parking lot expansion project is underway, which I have a video to share with you and two more slides. If we move to the next slide, I'd also like to provide you with a brief update regarding some of the happenings over with our Water Utility Services Unit. These include, you know, things that we might not normally hear about from day to day. First, our water utility staff is being proactive in replacing all the water services line at the dead-end section of Shoemaker Avenue, south of Los Nietos. The goal is to replace the water service lines to all the businesses, install new water meters and meter boxes, and to upgrade the fire hydrants before the street gets repaved later this year. The second one on here is, a few weeks ago, the city's Whittier the city's Whittier Water Supply Interconnection Point, which is the main valve that provides water to the city for us, had a power spike, and the valve opened completely. When this happens, you have a huge pressure spike that could have resulted in a water main break, and the pressure sort of traveling to that weakest link. Thank goodness, there was no crisis, and the valve was inspected and serviced. And in the event of a future outage, we will be okay. During a pressure spike, the excess pressure is relieved, and the water storage tank at Emin's Way was utilized as design. Lastly, I'd like to share about a minute and a half presentation of the work that's occurring out at Los Nietos Park related to the parking lot expansion project. This is live on the city's website. This is a condensed minute and a half version, the three-minute version with Spanish and English, and a little longer slideshow so that you can actually read all of the slides there, but I wanted to sort of give a little brief update on that, so if we can fire that away. give a little brief update on that, so if we can fire that away. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That concludes the executive reports.
Thank you so much. Onto appointments to boards, committees, and commissioners. Councilmember Rodriguez, do you have any tonight?
None at this time, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Rounds?
None tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Mora?
None tonight.
Mayor Protem Sarno? And I have none. Moving right along to council comments. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, good evening, everyone. I wanted to say, uh, thank you about our veterans. That was a great, uh, a great venue out there, and I just want to thank all the veterans for attending our event. Uh, we, we support you, we love you, and, uh, just thank you for your service. Lee Squire, thank you for always being here and supporting us. We really appreciate you, and thank you for bringing, bringing, uh, this item that our mayor read. Thank you. Uh, the community garden, I want to say we had a great time. Thank you to Manny Cantu and all of our staff. It was a beautiful event to get out. It was a beautiful day, and, uh, we, I brought my grandson, Thomas was out there, and we just had a, a fun time in the dirt and, uh, came back a little dirty, but it's okay because we had a good time. And, uh, you know, we, we're doing something positive in the community. Uh, some of those, uh, garden sections are beautiful. Some of our, our residents are keeping those up, and then there's others that, uh, that they need a little help, and that's what we were there for, is to, to clean up and make our, uh, community look very nice. So thank you. Want to thank our staff again for Chalk It Out. Uh, again, we had an amazing time. Thank you to our judges that were there and, and, um, did their judging, and, and I know that, uh, it was a tough decision on whatever and whoever you picked, but we just had an amazing time. Again, a beautiful day, uh, lots of music, lots of, uh, fun stuff and, and great people to hang out with. So thank you so much. And I also wanted to say, uh, to, uh, Yvette, thank you today for our meeting, and I wanted to see if you can check up on our, one of our streets, Howton and Pioneer, and see if we can, uh, take a look at that and, and see if we can help our residents over there. They're having a little bit of problems with, uh, requesting a, again, just like what we did on Whiteland, requesting a stop sign. I think that it's something to look into. And also, thank you for putting up the meter, uh, mileage reader. So, I think that was Dino, but thank you so much. Also, let me see, I can't read my writing without my glasses. Okay, I, I wanted to thank, uh, our staff, uh, Tom, our intra-manager, uh, city manager, Dino, Michelle, and Priscilla that came out to LA Cotta today. Thank you to Priscilla Rodriguez who coordinated the tour. We had a tour. We visited, uh, uh, all of the, uh, uh, services that LA Cotta provides. And anybody that wants a tour, just get ahold of Priscilla, but they have so many programs, counseling, services. We visited the Allen House and we visited Safe Haven. Uh, these services are great. It's right here in our own city. So if you're interested, you know, and I want to thank our Women's Club as well for always being there to support and give our, our, uh, brothers and sisters over there that need a helping hand, bags for Valentine's Day and Mother's Day. Thank you. Our Women's Club is awesome. Uh, I wanted to say, uh, have a happy Easter. I can't wait to, I can't wait for Saturday so I can go to Heritage Park and enjoy our breakfast and our Easter egg hunt. So with that, I'd like to wish everybody a happy, uh, Sunday Easter. Be safe, and thanks again. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Rounds?
Good evening, everyone. Once again, it's good to see everyone here tonight. Um, I'll start the ceremony that we had out at the Veterans Plaza out here was a really great ceremony, raising that P O W, um, flag. That was a nice ceremony, and thank you to all the veterans in the audience that, uh, for your service for our country. And with that, I was also, you know, with slides from the fire, the police, I just want to thank you all for your service to what you do for our communities, to keeping us safe and, uh, in helping out in times of emergency and, and a great need. Uh, it was good to see Ruth Covington here tonight. Many of you know her, and I, I, I just, you know, since her husband's passing, she just lived on and, uh, and honored him with, uh, joining the One Legacy and continuing that project. That was just great. And thank you to all the volunteers for the proclamation you got tonight. It was amazing. Everybody come up and, uh, accepted it. So that just shows you what our city's all about. Chalk it up, great event. And, uh, at the Art Fest, the winners will be recognized, and, uh, and I don't know if they're, they may even be participating in some chalk art too that night. I'm not sure, but, yeah. So, um, you know, once again, the, that's our youth. That's a great thing, and, and it was, it was a great event. Uh, the weather cooperated. It warmed up a little bit that day, and I'm like Annette, I'm glad I didn't have to judge because it was tough to pick. I wanted everybody to win. Um, uh, again, uh, looking forward to the pancake breakfast once again at Heritage Park this year. Just remember Heritage Park, not Los Nietos this year. Uh, you won't find much parking at, uh, right now at, at, uh, Los Nietos Park. And, uh, wish everyone here happy Easter, uh, to you and your family, and, um, we'll see you Sunday, maybe Saturday. Thank you.
Perfect. Uh, Councilmember Mora?
I also want to bring up about the P O W. I mean, it's great that we not only raise the flag, but we also raise awareness on what's happening in this world that, you know, our military veterans are sometimes forgotten. And that's the thing, they sacrifice their lives, um, every, you know, every time they're out there in combat. And, you know, the fact that when they come back home, you know, the suffering still continues, whether it be, you know, just the PTSD or, um, you know, medical conditions that they struggle with. And so if you guys have any family, friends, or veterans that you know, always keep them in your prayers because, you know, we may be, you know, struggle free at night when we're sleeping and, you know, sometimes they're, they're having difficult nights where they have, you know, they suffer insomnia. They suffer different types of, you know. Uh, I, I say that because my uncle, being, uh, had a couple uncles in Vietnam War, and I was talking to Lee and explaining to him that when I'd go visit him in Texas, my uncle would stay up late at night just watching a little projector, a little camera. Um, and he had all the money, like, you know, he had money. Uncle could have bought a bigger camera, but he would just sit there with his rifle, and he would just stare with binoculars. The binoculars was probably maybe like, you know, seven feet away, and he's just looking and the whole night, but every time you'd come over, I'd go out, you'd always have to bang on the door and say, "Deal, deal," you know, you'd have to say who you are just to let him know. Um, my aunt would always tell me stories that sometimes he would, you know, jump off the bed. You know, he's there, you know, like he's shooting at, you know, and so it's just the memories and the hardships that they go through. It's just something that, you know, we don't have to, and we have to thank them, you know, for what they've done. I mean, the Nakamoras suffered a loss of a son and, you know, and that still weighs on their hearts. And these are the things that we always have to remember. Um, you know, so I just want to thank all military veterans, you know, their willingness to sacrifice their lives, you know, for our country. I mean, the only other man to do that is Jesus Christ, who, you know, died on the cross for our sins. So, you know, through his blood, you know, we, we have forgiveness. So, um, firefighters, you know, thank you. Uh, you know, the fact of what they do, I mean, they put us on the map wherever they go. Um, people see the names, um, City of Santa Fe Springs, and they, you know, when you talk to people, they'll tell you where Santa Fe Springs at, but yet, you know, they see our trucks and they see our vehicles, you know, whether it be two hundred miles away, four hundred miles away, but our guys are doing their job. So I just want to thank that they come, you know, that they do their job and they come back safely. So it's great to hear. Uh, I know we had talked before, you know, Mr. Hatch, you put out something about us, um, when it comes to our vehicles. I know there was one vehicle that we're looking to sell at a hundred and fifty thousand. There was another one at five to eight thousand. And I know the five to eight thousand, hopefully, we can request to give that one to Navajoa. I mean, because it's really not a pick in the bucket. Don't clap too soon, Francis. We're just bringing it up, you know, so other than that, um, you know, the city is just constantly doing their things that our staff, you know, they do the job. They, they make us look good up here, and, you know, we, we just thank you for all that you've done. You know, it's, it's great to see everybody, you know, with the staff morale being up. Um, you know, uh, we do have Easter coming up, just in case some of you guys are not aware. It's not Thanksgiving, but, but Easter, it could be Easter. So other than that, you guys, uh, make sure you guys, uh, put it out there that it is a new location. So we don't want people to show up at Los Nietos Park wondering where's everyone else, uh, where's everyone at? But other than that, I just want to thank all of you guys in attendance, and may God always bless the City of Santa Fe Springs.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sarno?
Thanks. Um, again, I, everything my colleagues have said, Lee, thank you for helping us, bringing us aware and helping us with this today, and means an honor for everybody because we have to give thanks every day. It's not just one time, and this reiterates and makes us memorized and in memory of all the fallen soldiers and the people that haven't came home to their loved ones and the people that are here that still have PTSD and they're, they're suffering the way they are, and I thank you for making us realize that on a daily basis. Thank you, sir. We give thanks up here all the time to our, to our military, to our firefighters, to our police, and it's because we really do love what you guys do for our community. It, it's cold-hearted. We can't say thank you enough for everything you guys do. Um, Kevin, would you guys might not, you'd see outside on the public, the one thing one of our public works did was, uh, Metropolitan Little League, uh, they were, because of all the rain, they weren't able to play in their opening day, and two days before we were going to have a game, Kevin and staff actually worked their butt off to get three hundred kids to be able to play, and the fields look like M L B stadium, and I just want to thank you guys for what you guys do on a daily basis that not, not everybody gets to see that, Kevin, and you tell your staff, thank you very much for the hard work and dedication they do for this community. So thank you, sir. Yesterday was the, uh, Chamber Golf Tournament, and everybody was there, and I'm just letting you guys all know I hate golf, but I support it. It's one of the greatest uh, events that the city and the chamber put on together, and it really shows. Thank you, Kathy, for, you guys put on a great event. There was some great information that we got there, uh, from some vendors that were out there that hopefully we can uh, migrate into our community and help us, you know, put Santa Fe Springs on the map and, and do some things, uh, better. Yvette, um, I was wondering, thank you for everything you're doing. You know, I really love the, uh, the short, uh, movie on, on the, uh, website because I think that really lets people understand what's going on, and it, it really helps. Uh, thank you for that. If we could, I, well, I'm on the I five custodian, and I had, uh, complained about a week ago about, uh, some weeds that are growing alongside of the freeway, and I know a lot of the people have talked about it. Annette has, and, uh, we've talked to all of the neighboring cities with Metro and Caltrans, and they're supposed to get on it. But could we actually maybe get a, uh, an estimate from our merchants and just to see what it would cost? And then hopefully we can get a reimbursement from Metro or Caltrans because the way it looks is just, it's, it's a shame. It, it shouldn't have to look like that. So, uh, so with that, everybody, happy Easter, and, uh, thank you guys for everything you guys do for our city.
Thank you. Did I say diddle now for everything?
Yeah, it's good.
Um, no, again, Kathy, great event. The Chamber Golf Tournament is great from beginning to end. It's, it's an awesome event. It was pretty cold outside, but it was, it was worth it, though. It was really fun. Um, the fact of seeing the parks getting renovated, Lakeview Park is my home park, and just to see that it's now finally getting renovated, it's pretty cool to see that. Uh, Chalk It Out was great. All the artists, I mean, I could do stick figures up as much as I can do, and these kids are making huge pictures. It's, it's beautiful. Um, Manuel, thank you for the garden cleanup. It was, you see the heart that you have in there, and it's great. It brought back a lot of memories. I mean, I think we did, we did a whole plot, so my plot's ready to go, right? We're, we're good to start a new plot there. We're clean. Um, when we saw the, the news that, it's funny how we all kind of think to help others. When we got the email, I think the, I, the same thing as Joe Angel, I already, uh, emailed, uh, Thomas, say, let's, what, what can we do for our sister cities, our Navajoet? You know, this is what they need. This is what we are here for, the sister cities at Santa Fe Springs. So I'm glad we're in agreement that let's see what we can do for them. And on that, happy Easter. I would like to adjourn the meeting in memory of John Cowan, a longtime resident. Thank you.